I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening all, and thank you for coming, our E T M. Roger is joining us this evening because Mark is quite sick. So, he and Roger touched base and he's going to step in and there will be a part of the agenda that Roger won't do on Mark's behalf, the superintendent's professional goals. Mark will handle those himself at a future meeting. He'll all just weigh in and set the goals while he's homesick. And otherwise, we'll be able to sort of work through the rest of the meeting, I think, pretty thoroughly and Roger covering aptly. Any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, hearing none. Any board acknowledgements?
Well, my kids were really excited to see the picture of Mr. Brace with his new cat on the Humane Society page. So, congratulations to Mr. Brace and his family.
Congratulations to his growing family.
It was just one of those cute things happening over the vacation.
Oh, that is funny.
How we condolences to former teacher Marlene Emerson on the loss of her husband.
That's too bad. Thank you for letting us know. Any others? I know there had been some pretty cool things that went on at the middle school, the piano demolition or some work that had happened in collaboration with U V M and some international students and the folks at the middle school saying, "I'm doing a lousy job" because I wasn't able to attend and sort of reporting out from that. But I think that there are some pictures up on the website and I think it was a really amazing experience for the kids. And I think that would be among the type of things that when we look in this next semester after the new year at the opportunities coming up that building principals know about ahead, where we can sort of get that calendar and pick those times. We found out about it somewhat late and each of us, I'm sure, had conflicts on such short notice. So, but that'll be cool to be able to do that a little more intentionally another time because they're doing awesome stuff. All right. Any others? Moving right along, I will take a motion on the consent agenda.
I have the motion to accept consent agenda during the minutes of November night.
All those in favor?
Welcome by a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. We are so efficient tonight. Thank you, Dan. Thanks. All those in favor? Aye, passes five zero. Thank you. All right, Roger, moving right along to the Roger Budget Rollover Show.
Rollover budget. The Roger Rolls Over Show.
Do you need us clicking for you or you need Kimberly?
Me too.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Okay, so you can tell me when to go?
Yes, actually you can.
Yeah, I know.
Go to the first slide, I guess.
One of the things I'm thinking about we might, that we might need to do that's not yours to do necessarily, Roger, but that we could do from a communications standpoint is our budget planning calendar, which we usually have sort of a heads up on at the beginning
Yes.
of the process, if that exists somewhere and we could get it up at the website. I know that we have on our work calendar sort of the various touch times regarding budget and from here on out, there's going to be budget on the agenda every night. But I think we may have some points at which we're going to do more comprehensive overviews that we would want to get up at the webpage and our Facebook page.
I can open my email back up. I know I can definitely find it through there other than that. I'm not.
And you can share it with us after and we can get it up and get it on the website, too. That would be terrific.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, rollover budget presentation. Welcome back to.
Reality.
Budget F Y seventeen. Click to the next slide there. Short and simple. Dan was asking how long the presentation would take. Well, we can end it right here if you'd like.
Oh dear.
Our rollover budget is an increase of 3.8 percent. You'll read the budget amount, about twenty-two and a half million dollars, and an increase just short of eight hundred thousand. Before we go on to the next slide, I thought it might just, it might be helpful to just take a moment to remind ourselves of the, of the purpose of looking at the rollover budget. We haven't added new things to the budget. It basically continues current staff at new year contractual rates. Of course, we have contracts or master agreements in place with both teachers and support staff. But, so, current positions are funded. Changes in positions would be included in the first draft presentation. If there's areas where we know there can be expense reductions, those are taken into account in the rollover budget. We've put in new year estimates for insurance policies and, and things like that. Contractual items for our staff like health insurance, that's one of the big inclusions in the rollover budget. But the rollover gives us a starting point with which to begin our budget discussions. So now, the next slide, please.
Roger, can I just ask in the expense reductions that we know, that are known, what would be an example of that?
Couple examples come to mind in utilities. I believe we can safely budget a modest reduction. I think it's about ten thousand dollars in, in utilities. I know that Ellen Thompson has looked at curriculum materials for the coming year and, and has been, and has been able to forecast what those expenses would be. And again, then if there was a reduction, I plug that.
I think it's right here.
Yes, it is.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of you then. I apologize.
Well, not, not all of it is right there.
But sort of in general, though, so reductions that would be related to like if we needed, I don't know, fewer paras or fewer classroom teachers or whatever, those come in the next round.
Right.
But the things that from an operational standpoint, you can anticipate as known expense reductions, those are in this.
Exactly.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And actually, just to circle back to your point on staffing, at this point, we don't, or the rollover hasn't included any, any staff reductions at all and given projections of class sizes and so forth, I don't think that we would be, be looking at, at changes there. So now, the next slide compares the rollover that we're looking at tonight to the number that we looked at a year ago, the total increase in budget and percent change, quite, quite similar to, to last year's. I would also just remind that in each case in the rollover, we haven't made any assumptions about asking the voters to approve a resolution to add to our capital reserve fund because you folks, the Board of Education, have not yet discussed that. The next slide is a, a new feature tonight. And it's a shame that our superintendent can't be here to, to see this because it was experienced on our E T M. No, but Mark had suggested that, that we look back to rollovers in the, in recent years. So the first column shows the amount of the rollover budget. The second column labeled final budget is the, the final budget prior to the addition of any monies for the, the reserve fund. So you'll see in F Y thirteen, for example, the, the final budget was quite a bit larger, almost half a million dollars larger than the, the rollover. Included in that budget that year was replacement of the, the founder's roof, for example. So that was a, a special project. The next two years, F Y fourteen and fifteen, you'll see that the, the final budget actually came in less than, than the rollover. We look for economies beyond what the, the rollover might have provided. Last year, as we developed this school year's budget, the F Y sixteen budget, the final budget prior to capital reserve was about fifty-one thousand dollars greater than the rollover. So, that might make it a little clearer, the relation of rollover to, to final budget. Final budget with reserve, of course, is the amount that, the number that the public sees in, in final form. Of course, it is, it is in two propositions, the base budget and the capital reserve amount. See that we did not have a capital reserve question in F Y twelve that began in F Y thirteen. Questions on that slide? Moving right along then. Past couple of years, we've looked at cost drivers in our rollover budget, what, what some of the major categories that we look at year after year for helping make sense of the, the total increase. And, and this, by the way, the, the number for the rollover tonight compares the number that was actually in, in the budget. So like in, in last year's rollover, we had a certain amount for salaries and I think we maybe added a position or two. So, so the, the change now tonight in the column marked rollover F Y seventeen is what was actually budgeted for this year, not the original rollover amount to what next year's rollover would be. So, as is the case year after year, salaries is the, the highest or the largest number there. It's interesting, too, because as some of our senior teachers have retired the past couple of years, we have teachers at lower steps in, in the contract who then move up a step from year to year. And then so that increases the one-year change increment. So that is salaries and the social security on the salary increase. It's, the, the number is about even for teachers and support staff with, unless, of course, for non-union support or the administrators. Next item, pre-K private providers. Remember, that was a big change in our, our budget last year where we added a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars to what had been budgeted in F Y fifteen for, for pre-K. This year, we're, we'll be in our second year of Act one sixty-two. Is it one sixty-two? One sixty-six.
Sixty-two.
Yeah.
Just sixty-two.
Yeah. The pre-K Act.
The pre-K Act.
All these numbers.
Yep.
In F Y sixteen, we budgeted for seventy-one students or students' families accessing the three thousand dollars that was required per, per student. The state has increased for F Y seventeen, the three thousand dollar amount per student by ninety-two dollars. So it's three thousand and ninety-two. And because our program has been so well subscribed, we now need to budget for a hundred and twenty students, which is still a conservative number. It's about what we have in the, the program this year. So we have not funded in excess of, of what our, our current enrollment, enrollment is.
So, that money we pay out, this is all new to me. Sorry, guys. Now, does any of that come back to us from the state?
What comes back to us from the, the state is additions to our equalized pupil count.
Okay.
Each pre-K youngster counts, I believe, is point four six of a full-time equivalent student. So that works into all the calculations that involve equalized pupils for tax rate calculation and so forth.
Okay.
So, yes, and actually, it's, that's a good point to mention because we, we, this year were able, for F Y sixteen, were able to anticipate some of the enrollment we had. So we began to get that per pupil credit all already. Generally, there's a, a one-year lag, but it does help make the, the program not completely cost neutral, but, but very close to that. So, good for the students and easy for the, the taxpayers to, to support that, that program based on how the state has worked out those, those details. So, another increase for F Y seventeen, forty-nine more students anticipated and then that ninety-two dollars per student. Health insurance, I know in the superintendent's budget assumptions presented a couple of weeks ago, I know that we've already mentioned the unusually large increase in health insurance costs in the coming year projected at seven point nine percent. So, and the way we typically do that is take existing staff and what health insurance plans they have subscribed to or not subscribed to. Not everybody takes insurance and increase this year's actual by the percentage that we've been told to, to budget. Transportation, that's an item that we've looked at each year, of course. The number for increase next year, a bit larger. We're adding to the budget one more bus than we had budgeted for this year and, and our, some of our transportation expense, expenses for homeless student transportation and midday runs is up a bit more than, than anticipated.
And again, on that one, is that the homeless student transportation, is that reimbursed at the same rate with the same lag as transportation otherwise?
It is, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Transportation is reimbursed at about forty-six percent. So that, so that certainly helps the, the net cost here's out. Special services, I know that the superintendent shared the, the service plan expenses and how those were going up. The bulk of the service plan expenses were contractual increases in, in salary and, and benefits for, for non-salary and benefit items. Private school tuition or contracted services were up next year thirty-two thousand dollars. That follows the last couple of years where our, our outside contract needs were actually decreased. But that is very carefully managed and any increases carefully planned for there. Professional development is another area of the budget that we tend to, to go with, with recent trends. In F Y fifteen, our expenses the year before had been quite a bit greater than the amount that was in the budget. So it was necessary to bump that budget up quite a bit, sixty-eight thousand dollars, another thirteen thousand for the next year for F Y sixteen. And then, based on last year's actual expense and what we're seeing so far this year, I believe that we can safely reduce that by sixty thousand dollars. So, sometimes folks ask if we budget a certain amount of dollars per staff member for professional development, but that's, that's not the case. Some staff members utilize all money that's available to them for staff development. Others that might not need additional coursework or aren't attending conferences that they think would be of value, don't access those dollars. So, so we tend to go by very, very unscientifically, by, by recent, recent trends, yes. That's an area, and that would be an example, too, that, that knowing that we wanted to, to look as carefully as possible in this coming year with changes in state funding philosophy, that want to look at our budgeted dollars as carefully as possible and make reductions where that seemed to be possible. Last year, at the time of the rollover, we anticipated a number of staff members retiring. So the, the initial rollover included a fair amount of funding for retirement incentives. In the final budget, not all those retirements materialized, but there still was some funding left for, for retirement incentives. Now comparing next year's projected buzz, budget to what we had in this year's budget, that line is actually reduced by ten thousand five hundred.
And is that, when you speak of the incentive, it's simply that, that article in the contract that says if they inform us by a certain date, there's a dollar figure on the table?
Correct.
If they're eligible and they inform us?
Yes.
Those dollars are contractually available?
Yes, yes. Utilities, we've touched upon that briefly. Now, reviewing with our maintenance coordinator, Mr. McIntosh, a year ago, not this summer, but a year ago, we put new burners in at Essex Middle School. The others were failing and, and problematic. We put in new burners together. We decided to, to, to get the most efficient burners that, that we, that, that we could, could purchase. The exact dollar amount now escapes me, but, but comparing the amount of fuel burned last winter, which also was a cold winter, to the winter before was a definite reduction at the, the middle school. So, and, and the only, the only change was the, the burner. So, so, so that, that replacement accomplished through our capital reserve fund was, was definitely beneficial. Technology, the, the same amount is, is budgeted for equipment in the, the new year. The difference is that there's, there are some savings possible in software and, and replace, replacement parts, supply costs. A little reduction there. Extended school year for the special education summer program, that was an increase in the F Y sixteen budget. We're already there. The funding that we budgeted for this year will be sufficient again for next year. So, no change there. Miscellaneous other budgetary changes. We're able to say that, that that number is a reduction for next year, almost sixty-one thousand. The past couple of years, the sum of all other budget changes were, was a, a modest increase each year. Again, because we haven't yet discussed planning for the capital reserve, that's taken out. So the list of all of those changes adds up to the amount of our budget increase, seven hundred and ninety-three, almost seven hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. Was that one other one we were talking about earlier? That would be included in the miscellaneous changes, yet someone asked.
Curriculum. Curriculum materials.
Oh, curriculum materials. Yes, yes. So. Could have added curriculum materials, but we might be off the, off the screen by then.
Bigger screen.
Speaking of screens, shall we go ahead to the next slide? Debt payments. In the, shown, looking from F Y fourteen forward, like to do that because it, because it shows the pleasant reduction in our long-term debt in each of those years. Also on the second line, it shows what we've added in terms of the second proposition for the capital, capital reserve. But the debt has gone down in the neighborhood of about fifty thousand dollars a year and, and continues that, that downward slide to, to some extent. So, debt, short and simple. Next slide, please. I didn't, I didn't put this on, on the slide because I wanted to be very professional with the TV cameras going. But notice on my copy, I wrote very preliminary revenue estimates. As those that have studied the, the allowable growth, changes coming from the, the state and state education funding and, and so forth, and we're aware, those of us that have been out to meetings, that many districts are, are very concerned about their allowable growth being capped at a, at a percentage less than, than they've typically needed to have. The allowable growth, again, being in the money that we receive from the state education fund. So, normally, generally, we wouldn't begin talking about revenue at this point, but I thought it would be helpful tonight. I've, I have looked at, at revenue as much as I can at, at this point. Local revenue and all the different categories of that, you'll have to tune back in on December twenty-first for that riveting presentation. Interest earnings.
And guys, Dan will be back for that.
But a slight reduction in, in local revenue in the, the coming year. The next line, that, that's something that brings a smile to a business official's face. The way our, our capital debt is, is going, beginning next year, we're, we're getting interest credits because of the refinancing of previous loans. The interest credits total more than the interest due on those, on those loans. So in discussion with our, our auditors, they want us to show in our financial statement the full payment of the, of the principal on that loan, but then to show that interest credit is an additional revenue. So, the smallest number on that page, but, but it's a positive number. Actually, we're getting similar interest credits this year, but the credits don't exceed the interest due. So it's just netting out on the, on the budget side. Next line, more good news for us. Our fund balance, money remaining in the district's accounts based on savings in the budget or excess revenue as of this past June thirtieth totals almost three hundred and eight thousand dollars. That, that number is up handsomely from what it was a year ago. So, so that gives us an increase of two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in next year's budget to offset other budgetary increases. That's, that's good news. State reimbursements, that's the, the somewhat risky number, but I, but I did want to, to speak to that. Our state reimbursements are, are the reimbursement for transportation expenses. We don't get that final number until, until December. But, and, and sometimes the number can change between what we get, the projection we get in December and what the, the final result is next, next summer. But then the other state reimbursements are largely in special education for matching grant for, for regular special ed expenses, reimbursement for any students needing intensive services, a block grant for early education expenses, and then a reimbursement for all other expenses at about fifty-six percent of the, the cost we've incurred. So, those numbers, again, I don't get until December fifteenth. And I generally don't like to, at this early in the game, look at, at how they might change, but I did, I did so tonight and I'll, I'll circle back to that in a minute. But taking our service plan, for example, deducting my best estimates for, for some of the other grants and then multiplying the remainder by our typical reimbursement rate. So, so that results in increases. I'm projecting about a twenty-nine thousand dollar increase in transportation aid and the, the balance of that increase of two hundred And the, the balance of that increase of two hundred ninety three, almost two hundred ninety four thousand in state reimbursements would be in the special education area. But that's, that's not known for, for certain, so that's why it's, it's very preliminary. Federal grants, comparing what we'll budget in the rollover to what we budgeted this year, a slight reduction of almost sixty eight thousand dollars in, in federal grants. By the way, federal grants came in less this year than we had, than we had budgeted. So, so actually, what we're truly receiving this year, comparing that to next year's budget, there's not much of a difference, but yet budget to budget, there, there is that reduction of sixty seven thousand seven hundred dollars. State Education Fund, in previous years, what we'd look at when we have more information on other sources of revenue, looking, for example, at the FY16 column, add up all those other sources of revenue. The budget was twenty million, seven hundred forty three, nine eighty nine. We needed seventeen thousand, three sixty three from the State Education Fund to make our budget whole. In the past, the district would do their best estimates of all other sources of revenue, and then the state would, would, would make the budget complete. We would indicate how much money we needed from the State Education Fund. We know over the past number of years, there's certainly been encouragement to keep that increase as reasonable as possible, but ultimately, the district would decide it. In the coming year, that, that's likely to be changing. It's in law now that it, that it, that it has changed, although the legislature might be reviewing that more when they reconvene. So anyways, on the State Education Fund line, I continued the same number across for State Education Fund. The, a lot, the shaded area, allowable growth, that's the amount of additional money from the State Education Fund that we would need to make this proposed rollover budget complete, to make it whole. We know that, that our district's per allowable percentage increase is one point nine six. Very simply, this increase calculates at a little bit less than that, one point nine three two percent. So obviously, the growth that we'd need in the education fund would be all the greater if we weren't fortunate to have that increase that we did in fund balance. It would all, the allowable growth from the education fund, or the money needed from the education fund, which in fact could exceed what we're allowed to have, would, could change also if the state reimbursements don't come in close to my estimates. But I thought it'd be helpful to, to try to estimate the changes in state reimbursements and so forth, so, so we would have tonight the, the vision that, that the, that will probably come out pretty, pretty well in terms of staying within the allowable growth. But again, that, that is all very preliminary, and I did want you to understand how, how that, how that could change. We don't know though, until December 15th, how those numbers change. Questions on that? Notice by, in, in the increase calculated as a percent, I showed not applicable in FY16. I know what the, our percent increase was, but the state wasn't saying your increase can only be such and such. So that's why I showed that as a non-applicable.
Do you guys have questions? I'm happy.
Going on to the next slide, then.
I might, Roger, but I'm gonna let us go to the, the rest of the slides.
Okay.
I think they may not be things that we'll be able to answer tonight, but they're thoughts I have.
Great, great. In the, in the previous slide, the, the main topic of discussion was the State Education Fund. Looking at that a little bit in greater detail, I just wanted to review some of the things we already know or give you some, some information. The, for our district, the final allowed percentage increase per student in, in, in education spending is one point nine six percent. So that number is a given. This summer, the, the state did some calculations to show us what that would, would be. District Y making assumptions for student enrollment, and that, that increase would be three hundred and forty three thousand dollars. On the previous page, we were a bit below that at three thirty five. The, the methodology used in this new way of looking at education fund spending is, is amounts per pupil. So for our district, that first number shown in yellow, the AOE is increased per pupil. That has been calculated. That's what the state is allowing our per pupil expense to be. And per pupil expense is the total money from the State Education Fund divided by the equalized pupil count. Next line in yellow, the state has calculated for our district that per equalized pupil will be able to spend up to fourteen thousand, five hundred ninety one dollars and forty six cents. Anything above that, we move into the penalty range. I did show in the FY16 column, next to that, the, the marked change in the penalty threshold year to year that for FY16, there wouldn't be a double tax penalty until our per pupil spending exceeded seventeen thousand, one hundred. We weren't anywhere as close to that. In the brown shaded area, note that our increase in state ed funding, and we've, we've looked at the dollars and the percentage increase year by year, but just this two-year look, FY16, the state ed funding, what we needed to make our budget whole was an increase of five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, or just a little over three, three percent. So, and we were lower than the statewide average in terms of that increase. Still, there's a, a big difference between three point oh five percent and one point nine six percent. But again, that wasn't figured as an amount per pupil. Now, ETSD spending per pupil, for FY16, our spending, our final spending per pupil, which included inclusion of the capital reserve in the budget, was fourteen thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars per, per student. We do not know what our spending per pupil would be for this rollover budget or our final budget, because we don't yet have the equalized pupil count from the state. So that, that's a big, a big unknown.
Is that a number, another December 15th number?
That, that number they released prelimi- preliminarily, December 1st, but then it gets updated and not really finalized till about December 15th also. So, so, and that calculation for our spending per pupil and, and is, is our K8 enrollment. So our K8 equalized pupil count used for budgeting purposes this year, FY16, was, as announced by the state, one thousand, two hundred and thirteen students. I believe the number will be a bit higher next year, which would further add to our allowable growth if we.
Count?
Uh, yes, but, but it's not a, it's a risky science to, to be, uh, calculating, calculating that.
And what I recall is that the article presented to the voters needs to be presented in a per pupil.
That is correct.
Spending.
Yes.
And then the separate ballot from the high school will also separately have that budget described in per pupil spending.
Correct.
And so where we've in the past used blended rates in presentations or otherwise, we might still do that, and impact on taxes would still be blended.
Right.
But the descriptive, we wouldn't really be able to come up with a blended per pupil spending, right? Because that would apples and oranges and not work. Okay, I just am thinking about how we describe all of this.
Yes.
To those who might be interested before they vote.
Yeah, actually, thinking back on, I think where we most significantly use the blending is in terms of percentage change in taxes and not the, the dollar amount per, per pupil. So I don't, I don't think the.
Right, we'll have to.
It would be mutually exclusive.
That's right, in budget presentation, because what they'll see on the ballot will be in per pupil spending. I know occasionally we've used that as our information when we do budget presentations. And sometimes we have used the percent increase in actual budget or the impact on taxes, and it sounds as though we'll want to be clear that this is part of the presentation.
Correct. So.
Got it.
The, uh, the, the language, yes, is, I believe we will still be showing the total budget and then explaining that it's, it's an amount per pupil, and it will have to be very clearly stated if that amount was to exceed the allowable, allowable amount.
So if I'm, just to kind of like, from, from my brain to kind of summarize it all. So if we take our rollover budget, which is basically taking last year's budget, putting all the known operational changes contractual, and compare to what we anticipate with revenue, we fall within the state's suggested, or not suggested, allowable percentage, but really only by eight thousand dollars, which at this point.
Until we know other.
Until we know additional.
The, the, the equalized pupil count, yes.
Okay.
And with that, that would potentially allow us to have additional dollars in the budget, investments.
Correct.
But we won't know that information till next month.
Yes.
And does that change at all when we get our actual? Because whatever we predict, actual tends to be different. Does that affect it at all? Like, for example, the years where we have to hire additional teachers.
Oh, oh.
Does that?
That, that doesn't, if, if, if we have additional budgetary expenses, no, that doesn't, that doesn't affect our revenue estimates that, that we made for, for that year or so. In most cases, if we've had to hire an additional teacher, again, a couple of times, as you know, we've had to do that at the elementary level. We've had to find other savings in the budget to, to offset that.
Budget transfers.
And, and if worse came to worse, if there weren't others, other savings, then, then the district would, if, if that additional staff position was, was needed and was, had to go in the budget no matter what, if there weren't savings or additional revenue, then the, then the district would end up overspending the budget that year, and then that is made up in a subsequent year. We've never, we've never been in that position, but that's, that's the mechanism if a district has to add to their budget after it's adopted.
Okay.
Actually, if you could go back to the previous slide for just a moment?
Um, can I get up on here?
Sure.
Magic, you're awesome.
So Rachel was just comparing the, the allowable growth that, that I've calculated there based on that rollover budget, allowable or not, that's the amount of additional funds we need from the education fund, and comparing that to that preliminary number from, from the state. Just to, to make this clear for you. Two, other changes in the budget, higher or lower, would, would affect that. That total budget that's shown at, at this point does not include a provision for the, the capital reserve. So, so if, if, if state reimbursements came in higher, that would free up a little bit of, of, of money that, that could be used for that. The other wildcard is the equalized pupil count, but other than that, it's, it's pretty much laid out as we have. Other questions? Did, did this tie?
Since we were, yeah.
Your, uh, your thoughts on?
So a couple of questions, and I think, um, maybe it's more in us discussing and learning from you and then understanding where it falls in the budget process. But my two questions were around capital reserve and fund balance and envisioning a unified district going out, since those are typically strategic uses of our funds from a budgeting standpoint. Um, can you lend some insight into our thinking on that? Or is that an area of collaboration that you and Grant might be doing so that, you know, we wouldn't want to leave ourselves short in a capital reserve for the years in which we're currently operating, or put ourselves at a disadvantage from our operational needs, even going out several years?
Mm-huh.
But it would seem as though it should be a collaboration among all the current year budgets to be planning sort of consistently for the longer term needs of a unified district. So any insight you might lend to that would be helpful in our thinking around the priority for our capital reserve investment.
I can't specifically speak to that this evening, but I think once we've had more opportunity to compare these initial budget estimates, our district and, and Chindon and Central that, that have more information on what, what their planning, capital reserve wise is. Their, their capital reserve, as we've discussed before, is handled.
As a separate.
Yeah, a, a separate item, but, but still.
And as a percentage of budget, as opposed to a dollar figure, yeah.
And, and, and often the, that, I believe that that expense then is, 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 or that they expend money from that reserve the very next year as part of their capital plan, where we've chosen not to do that and build up some funds. But no, we, we will need to get more information on the capital reserve, yes.
So I think, I mean, if, if that's the will of us collectively, I think that'd be an area of sort of direction from the board to come back to us with more information on, um, sort of options in that area, and even as you've done in the past, which has been terrific, sort of aligning our priority list of a million plus dollars of capital reserve plans. What do, you know, relooking at that through a unified lens and with information on how that stacks up relative to our neighbors and our future unified district. Is that, is that of interest to anybody other than myself? Yeah, I think, I think we just need to know more to inform our thinking on what we ask our voters for.
No, and a related point too with our, after our merger, currently, the, the high school budget has money. I believe it's not in a specific reserve fund, but, but the state has provided reimbursement for some of the high school reconstruction expenses from, from previous years. So that, a portion of that money is used each year to offset the, the debt. So although it's in a separate bank account, but it's not called a reserve, but that, that, that would be, it's the equivalent of a reserve and something that we, we'd wanna sketch out together too. So when all the budgets come together, that would be a known, known quantity.
And then my other question was on fund balance, and I know, um, have there been times, and you can just remind me, maybe I'm getting this wrong, where a portion of the fund balance has been applied to the coming year's budget and a portion maybe to capital reserve, or where we've sort of apportioned out that, um, fund balance.
Yes.
Coming in.
Yep.
And so in what will be the wrapping up of this district after this FY17, is it the correct assumption that you apply the full fund balance as revenue to the FY17 budget? As opposed to as capital reserve, or, I, I don't really know. Maybe that's related to the capital reserve question. Or maybe I'm getting it totally wrong.
I, I think if we, if we sketch it out on our, our notepads a little bit, the July twenty, or the July first, June 30th, 2015 fund balance. the July twenty, or the Ju- July first, June thirtieth, twenty fifteen fund balance is a revenue to this, to this FY seventeen budget, our last separate budget. So our fund balance at the end of this school year, June thirty FY sixteen, whatever that number is, that would be a revenue in the, the merged districts' budget. And, and I know to me, it's, it's helpful to think, especially in the, the first year as the merger's occurring, I mean, it, my guess is that combined budget would be relatively similar to if, if CCSU built
Fifty four million, yep.
FY eighteen budgets and, and, and we did ours and then added it all, all together. You know, that, that would be a, a starting point for comparison, for example, so, so yeah, but are any, any savings that, that we have this school year or excess revenue would ultimately go to, it would be a revenue to the, to the merged district, as will be savings or excess revenue in the high school and injunction schools' budgets.
And in this example, that with the preliminary revenue estimates, we assumed all of it to be fund balance applied versus any of it being, um, put in reserve?
Correct, yes, yeah.
And that's where the question comes from, yeah, I guess.
Our, our, yeah, our, yes, our, I think when, when we've specifically apportioned a, a part of it for capital reserve, like, matter of fact, the year that we started the capital reserve with two hundred seventy five thousand, we also budgeted three hundred twenty five thousand to replace the roof and founders. We had that cash because of certain circumstances in the, in, in the accounting and, and the, and the final expense and revenue picture from a year, a year earlier. This, this year, the, well, certainly two hundred and twenty six, almost two hundred twenty seven thousand dollars more in fund balance is a, is a sizable number, but because of the changes in, in state ed funding and allowable growth, it seemed appropriate, I, I thought at this point, to just show it all is going to a, a budget revenue.
Thank you. So when you're asking for direction, do we have any other questions for Roger from this preliminary look?
I, I often feel at this point, it's, it's like we've just gotten our very first taste. It's almost hard to come up with
Right.
Direction to question other than great, so it's our next stop. Yeah, see you on December seventh, too.
Yeah.
It's, it's, I mean, it's crucial and well done, I appreciate it, but no, you have no questions.
Yeah, and, and so I'm, I guess I'm going to ask you, Roger, when you're seeking direction from the board other than informing us so that we can really consider the capital reserve question, what else can we do to support you in the next steps for the first draft budget?
If there were any items that might question, if they're in the budget or the extent to which they're, they're in the, the budget, how much money, if, you know, if there were aspects or investments that you thought important that we bring back and include in the first draft, that, that would be the, the best direction for, for next week.
Things like maybe, um, class size information to help inform us where we stand for classroom teachers. And thinking of some stuff that we usually have early enough to think about. Eventually, we always have that, I'm not sure if we have that right up front, but in terms of, you know, where we are in our class size
Yep.
Policy, um, is helpful.
Actually, we, we've already done that, or have the data and done an analysis that would be shared next week, so but no, that's, that's an important thing, and that, of course, would, would help, uh, help direct the conversation too on staffing levels and, and so forth.
This may or may not be appropriate in the first draft budget, but you and Kim, you talked about the grand wish list of projects that we would like to see done in the district.
Mm-huh.
What is our current reserve, what's our current list? Gosh darn, that list is bigger than the reserve is. You know, what, what are, what are we likely to tackle in the near future?
Very near future.
Given, given that, um, we, we will no longer exist as an Essex Town School District, but as a unified district, that's, that's going to be a huge question as to how we prioritize our, our what things on that wish list we, we go after.
Well, we can certainly update that, of course, remember this year too, in discussing the, uh, the wish list, we also had discussions, and, and in the case of, of the new fire alarm at the elementary school, we chose to build that right into the budget as a necessary item that, rather than
It wasn't, it wasn't a wish.
Yeah.
Yes, we do, it was gonna happen.
Yeah.
Rather than using capital reserve money, and actually, that, that was about an eighty, eighty five thousand dollar item, so that's a large part of, of what that miscellaneous changes to the budget was. We've been taking that out, but, you know, certainly, uh, the capital project this will jog our memory if there's anything that we think we should include in the budget. Again, that more so next year than this year, it would probably be necessary to use existing capital reserve money if we were going to include any, any bigger
Yeah.
Project, so we stayed within the allowable growth.
And in truth, by, you know, the rules or whatever, by real cap, that was a real capital project, but we just also understood that if for some reason it hadn't been approved, we couldn't fund it and we needed to take, to get that done, so I think, um, and I think, thinking about, while we will only exist for, you know, through FY seventeen budget, if we know there's something that must happen by FY eighteen, you know, hopefully all, all districts that will be then unified will be thinking in that vein, if we're going out a couple of years, we want to make sure we're aligning the available resources with the needs in the next couple of years so that transition doesn't put a huge bill on, you know, our neighbors or whomever because it hasn't been planned for strategically.
Yeah, the first few years of our capital reserve, the voters approved that, and then we went right ahead and did necessary projects utilizing that, that money. This year, you make a good point by building that fire alarm system into the operating budget and the, the voters approving more money for the capital reserve. That money is in fact sitting in, in reserve and is, there are not plans for, for spending it this year, so it will carry forward to next year, which is a good thing.
It is.
It is.
I guess, I would, I would love to have some enlightenment on what happens to that capital reserve fund at the end of FY seventeen.
It goes, any assets go to the new district.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's
It's part of our balance sheet, yeah.
Most
And so maybe having a frame of reference for how ours compares to our neighbors would be beneficial for the conversation as well. Just, and maybe, you know, I think we've had lots of transportation updates, but just to, as we think about that line item and, you know, its adjustment, just, you know, again, sort of a little reflection on where we come up with the
A little more detail.
A little more detail in the transportation to sort of make certain we're informed and prepared to defend, um, what I think people were especially concerned about this year in our planning for the coming budget.
And the, the, the transportation contract, as was known last year when we, when we approved the, uh, the bid, the rates are going up three point two five percent next year. For the current year, we, we received, we were able to negotiate a, a slight quote unquote signing bonus of sixty five hundred dollars, which lowered our expense this year. That's not in place again next year, and then the additional bus and additional provision for, for some of our, uh, uh, other transportations, so, but no, we can certainly clarify that.
And just clarity that the current number of buses and routing is, is adequate to assume carrying that over to the following year is, is, you know, prudent planning, I guess.
Yep.
Make sure we've probed that one. Any other thoughts, folks? To keep Roger busy for the next week.
No, we will be working on budget, uh, this week, so please call or send an email if you have any other, other thoughts, and then, and definitely on December twenty first, after we have the, uh, first draft of the, the budget in place and, uh, a lot more information on revenue, a lot of this will come much more clearly together, I think.
It'd be a great Christmas gift.
Overall, we don't, we won't have a lot of wiggle room, a lot of corrections, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Roger. That was awesome. It was honestly not quite as frightening as I was anticipating, knowing our health insurance increase and the allowable growth cap, and, um, we appreciate whatever magic went into that version, and I know we also haven't sort of built in any strategic investment or other planning that I'm sure Mark would, in an ideal world, love to be able to do, so it'll be interesting to hear more about what the thoughts are and what we'd like to do but aren't, or what we're going to do instead of other things.
Yes.
So, thank you. I am ready.
Madam Chair, I move the absence of the superintendent, I move that we, um, cancel number five. I, I lost the word I was gonna say.
Number five or number four?
How about the superintendent's professional goals?
That's it, that's number four of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, number four, just three point four.
Three point four, monitoring superintendent performance, how's that?
Thank you.
Nicely done.
I don't know where that word went.
I think, yes, thank you, all those in favor. Hi, passes five zero. And in email exchange with Mark, we thought that'd probably be on the next agenda, um, that we'll get that on there. Thank you, guys.
It almost feels late already for that to be on.
I know, I think we were so intentional to make sure, and I think Mark was intentional as we were looking back at our goals, that we had a known set of, you know, what's going to be going on, and we figured that was hard to know before November third.
Understandable. Just an observation that it feels like
It does, it's sort of like our
Happen through the year, what are your goals?
Exactly.
Wow, that's a lot of letters.
Isn't that a lot of letters? I have to believe, isn't that something?
Tell me there's a way to abbreviate it.
It's easy to pronounce it, pronounce though, it's UCUST.
That's great. I know, I was thinking if we could drop the C U U.
I want my kids to go to UCUST.
U S T, I don't know what that will become, folks, but I have to believe that's going to be on an early agenda item for the new board. I know that the group that got together to try and come up with that name, because I was among them, was the Essex Westford Educational Community was intentional. The rest of it, we found later, as we were putting together the articles, that there was strong legal guidance that you include all of that, or they were going to give you a U number of some sort.
So what is it, so it's unified, okay, Essex.
Essex Westford Educational Community Unified Union School District.
Okay, Unified Union.
So that I could say that E is education, I thought there was like an Essex Junction and then Essex, okay.
That's what I was trying to make it, it didn't work right.
No, no, it's something though, huh?
Wow.
So the allowable growth update, I know that Mark and Judy headed down to Montpelier when the House Ed Committee convened, um, meeting on the seventeenth, eighteenth, I'm sorry, of November, and testified, the first part of the day was on, um, sort of an U forty, or Act forty six update. So, um, they testified on the experience of our communities voting in the affirmative, and then the superintendent, um, from Lemoil, whichever it is, Tracy Wren, you know, shared her feedback from the experience in their communities where that was a split vote and was not approved. Um, and then
They are revoting.
They are revoting, they are. Um, and then the afternoon was, I think, devoted more to this allowable growth provision, and they are appreciating the unintended impacts of this allowable growth limit and it, what could be very damaging effects to educational programs at a time where boards are also being asked to think strategically about unifying and, and investing in programs to just turn around potentially the following year. I mean, it seems as though our situation isn't quite as dire as had been anticipated, but that, um, throughout the state could play out in a very damaging way for education for kids, or worse so, because if communities were to decide they weren't going to be able to meet their allowable growth, now the very intended effect to reduce tax impact to taxpayers now becomes a two for one increase for the money spent beyond the allowable growth in what taxpayers are going to be paying. So they're getting that the unintended consequences could be incredibly damaging and be the exact opposite of what they intended for taxpayers. Um, the reality of the situation is the timing is such that they will come back in in January and most budgets will have been determined, and so while they are definitely sympathetic to the situation, I'm not sure what can be done practically, and I think we all have to be planning our budgets as though the allowable growth remains in effect, and, um, and be doing perhaps extra communication with our communities around, you know, what we need to do and perhaps also remaining more active with our own legislators as they go back to work in January. So anything that I get or Mark gets, I'm sure, or Roger, if you have anything to add to it, um, I think we're going to need to be as active as we can in this arena, um, but I, that was all that I've heard or read lately.
No, that's the same information that I have too, so.
Yeah, um, so that's that.
Maybe circling back for a minute to Essex Westford Superintendent, uh, did ask that, uh, we discussed with the, the board that, that he is meeting tomorrow morning with Superintendent Di Nova and Brian O'Regan, the gentleman that led the study committee, and they're going to spend the, the morning, uh, hopefully outlining, uh, next steps over the next eighteen months and, and, uh, beginning some of that, that planning. Mr. O'Regan was, was, uh, has been out of state since the summer, but, but traveled back to Vermont for other reasons and, uh, and was able to make himself available to sit with our two superintendents tomorrow. So I know that they thought that would be very helpful, and they're, uh, they're looking forward to that. Then also on December tenth, uh, the two superintendents, Mr. Geisler, the business official at CCSU, and myself are meeting with Secretary Holcomb to, uh, the superintendent's actually scheduled that, that meeting to get more information on, on the planned agenda for the initial organizational board meeting and, and discuss some of the, the finances regarding, uh, uh, more grant funding for the, uh, for different tasks that we need to engage in now to merge the two systems and, and other topics, are you, anything that you could add to, to that?
Um, Mark and I had a meeting, and I think you guys had known we were going to do that, just to be available for questions that people had in anticipation of the unification, and we had a handful of people here, um, I mean, probably close to ten, I think, so that was about as well attended as any of our info sessions prior to the vote. Um, and lots of questions and thoughts and concerns, and we sort of took all those, and I think what will remain important is that we as a board do our best to continue communicating as, as clearly and as timely a way as we can with our current district employees as the unified board gets to work and that process happens. So that link, I'll make sure that as a person sitting on both of those boards So, that link, uh, makes sure that as a person sitting on both of those boards, we keep that link happening and making sure that, you know, those takeaways are showing up on our Facebook page or wherever we decide to try and effectively communicate, kinda like we did with the study where we would try and keep updates on our Facebook page and other places. That was one thing I certainly took away from our conversation.
Well, job security is everything, please.
I know, I know. Not surprisingly, the majority of attendance was out of our central office. And there were a handful of teachers, not even probably a handful, there were a few teachers. And I think there's some assurances that our class sizes are such that, you know, unification is not gonna impact our buildings any differently than a change in enrollment would at normal budget time. So, um, you know, having some sense of what reducing redundancies and, you know, consolidating central offices, those are all very sensitive terms and to know what that will mean in practice for people in as timely a fashion as possible because our skeletal staff is working wearing multiple hats all the time in that central office and, you know, to the, they also have their own careers and professions to be planning for as well. So, I heard loud and clear that we, it'd be helpful to have a timeline for when those kinds of decisions will be made and in that, the new board has not even been sworn in, there was no way to provide them a sense of what that looked like. Um, but I do think that with Brian O'Regan's support, they'll be, um, the superintendents will be working together. It's not gonna be arm wrestling, it's gonna be really thinking about, and I think, um, I'm hopeful that that'll be the direction a new board will be able to provide, is to say, we need to think about what we're building, not just assume that a particular structure is the one we're gonna follow because I think we're creating something that is different than either of the two of our current structures. And we might be informed by looking at other, either SU structures or school, you know, unified K twelve school, pre-K twelve school districts throughout our state, we might be informed by looking at other state structures and what supports the work. But I think what has to happen in terms of planning is what is the work that needs to happen and then what is the structure that supports the work? And I think, um, I think that with Brian O'Regan will be one of those, there are transition funds and that sort of consulting services that'll help that be a productive conversation is gonna happen. One thing I learned in looking at minutes from the Chittenden East Unified First Meeting, there's a very prescribed set of articles that need to sort of be gone through as I read their minutes, so things that will definitely happen at the first meeting. And then they did a kind of a half-day retreat, you know, pretty soon after that to do some board learning together and so, that's been helpful to me to sort of think about, okay, when are we getting started, what are we doing and why, you know, what might this look like, how to, because I don't think, um, I will be getting together with Nicole Mace and Diane Kirsten Glettman, who is helping consult with the V S B A, but she's also on the Chittenden East Board and was on the V S B A board with me. So, she, the three of us are gonna get together and think about what do boards need in transitioning? And so, in hopes that, um, they've had a lot of support through the V S B A for studying the notion of unification, what they're trying to also figure out now is how do they help support execution on unification? So, um, I'll keep you guys posted in what we learn from that, but there's no date yet as far as I know, but maybe after the tenth, we'll know from Secretary. So, that's, there's no date. Apparently, the earliest I thought I had heard it could happen was December eighteenth. That was, I think there's a window within which things could be, um, contested or revoked or something, right? So, I think that they, it was, there was a a window within which it would need to happen. I wanna say it was like December eighteenth to maybe January something, somewhere in there, the, um, swearing in will happen and, um, and that is a little bit more pro forma than I, than I thought I, than I didn't really know what that first meeting would be like. But it's like an annual meeting, cause it's the first annual meeting of the new district. So, um, there are, you know, some rules around that, um, and it's pretty well guided, I think, by lawyers and by, you know, Secretary Holcomb.
Can't be an annual meeting, cause you haven't even met.
Haven't met. So, it's, I don't know, but it sorta goes like that. So, like, it's the first meeting and then it'll be, I think, attended kinda like that where people
Cause the annual meeting is where the town comes together and hears your presentation.
Yeah, so it's kinda, you know, I if we haven't even met. So, I think that that's how they go about the swearing in though, is what it sounded like when I was looking at the minutes from Chittenden East. But I'll keep you guys informed as I know more. Um, on December eighth, I am, just so, yeah, I'm not going in my Essex Town chair hat, I'm going in my, um, representing the Study Committee hat on Brendan's behalf. There's a champagne leadership meeting at UVM, I think, that's gonna focus on education. They have a, this champagne leadership group, um, meets, I guess, once a month on various topical issues and education is their topic for December. So, um, I will be there discussing our process. And then they're going to give these, you know, leaders from throughout the state, sample board scenarios to go through and we'll just help facilitate their small group discussions to see what they would recommend, which I thought was kinda interesting. So, I think we'll just be there as a resource, basically. I'll be on a panel, um, sharing our experience. That's as much as I've got for an update. So, moving on to our goals and we're coming back to them simply because similar to Mark and not, you know, wanting to presume anything about what would happen November third, but knowing that that might impact what our goals for the year are. I just wanted us to take a minute to come back to them, or a few minutes, and make sure we think they're still our goals for the year and what would be our sort of indicators of doing these things? What do, what do we think we need to do to make sure we're, um, achieving our goals? So, we plopped in our agenda, the three goals, the state mandated policy updates, um, the effective communication with community and stakeholder groups, and increased collaboration with CCSU board and administration. I think so.
That ship has sailed.
That's right. We, we certainly have clarity on whether or not that is
I think that it's very important to make sure that as you find out more about how the merging being on the board, if we're able to share that, because I really feel strongly that we don't wanna just kinda then leave it and then in a year from now.
It's just happened, absolutely.
I think that's definitely, you know, especially utilizing either Facebook or however we we choose is the best way to
And we as a board then being communication sort of maybe now that we, can we agree that we probably hit all of our required policy updates? I think we did that, right? Check. We did our goals. We did one of our, we did a third of our goals.
Plan, it's towards making this whole transition easier for everybody and cost effective.
That's right. And any particulars on how we think that will happen best?
Oh, I think that the boards maybe should get together and s- and s- see what the future looks like, I mean, like you wanted to, like, you know, with policy governance and the way the Prudential Committee runs, maybe if we just all got together and sat down as a current boards, maybe we could help you come up with a best governance form.
Would, would you think that as being all three, I don't know, how many boards are there? Six now.
The fifth is a, is like
I would say at least Westford Prudential Committee and ourselves. Cause to start there. And then was, if we establish some kind of a, a plan, then reach out to the high school board and who's the third, who's the other?
I think it's just the CCSU, yeah. So, so I almost think if we were gonna be able to try and find a common meeting time for all of our boards, I might advocate that we include the high school right up because some of the stuff that's happening in this, in this year, even if we weren't unifying, I think whether it be maybe board or otherwise, or maybe it's even a little bit of an agenda, but as much as anything, a spending time together.
I just think, given the experience on all of the boards, in that way, they also feel they have some kind of input and that this new board coming in isn't gonna just say.
My, my question is, is the new board at that meeting?
I would say not the first time around. I would say the first time we meet.
Or they could be, cause it's a public
Well, yeah, some of the people that are on the board
But your suggestion would be making a meeting between current existing boards, anybody who wants to come and watch.
Well, yes, nothing, nothing secret, just that way, I think maybe if we get differences out, discuss differences, discuss future plans, that when a new board is ready, there'd be some kind of a direction to go with or some kind of a plan that, because it is so vastly different, the way we do things and the way the other committees do things. I'd rather see us do some of the work and take some of the burden off you, because you're gonna have enough as far as, you know, the rest of it goes.
Yeah. Well, and one of the things that Chittenden East did, I looked in their second meeting, was like a retreat and they invited, they had Steve Dale and Val Gardner come and the first part of it was, um, essential work of boards. Basically, it was the board training that everybody has as sort of an orientation. And the second part of it was actually, um, looking at policy governance as a model. So, that was the way they structured their first meeting together after being sworn in. So, I think that's an interesting
You'd be happy to know they are starting policy governance. I talked to the superintendent and he's, they're very excited about it.
Yeah. I think it would certainly help to know where we're going with that because to just have the state mandated policies doesn't really direct what we're looking to have happen for kids and it's hard to figure out the structures you need in place if you don't know what you're trying to do for kids. So, I think, I, I think that that can facilitate the process pretty well. One of the things I wonder, and I know, I don't know if we've done it every year or if we've done, did it last year, but we used to do sort of a carousel meeting of all the boards and, or we did a legislative, you know, coffee and dessert kinda thing. So, maybe whether or not we have legislators there, but maybe that's the focus of this joint carousel meeting is this idea that we, we structure an agenda that allows us to have conversation that shares what we value most about our version of work or whatever and what we, you know, learn a little bit from each other. Maybe we structure some questions that help us to learn from one another and try and harness the experience of the current boards. I, I like that idea a lot and maybe that's replaces either the legislative search or maybe
That's something to do in the spring anyway.
We usually did it in January or, or just after they got back in session or just we give them a, no, we give them like some scoop going into their session. I feel like it was a January thing. But I, I think that that's a good idea, um, and a, a good consideration to reach out. So, I'll talk to Mark and then we'll, you know, figure out how to sometimes hard during budget season to put another meeting, to come up with a common meeting time, but Yeah, I could, I, does that sound like a good idea to you guys? If we can find a way to
That very topic might be on the agenda tomorrow morning too, as Mark and Judy Di Nova speak with Brian O'Regan about, uh, type of board governance and how to share information.
No, I'm, I'm curious, when you bring up Chittenden East, where are they in the process? Have they passed their June thirtieth, two thousand seven?
Yeah, they're operating. Yeah. So, they last November voted to unify and unified this past July one. And, you know, one of the advantages they had is they already had common contracts and common policies. And so, they were going from a bunch of different boards, but they had one union high school and they had one their, their job is a little easier than when we've got ahead of us, but they had a far less time.
One district office serving, serving all of the same
There may be efficiencies they find in their, find or found in their central office, but that would just simply be because of some of the duplicative work that had to happen with so many different boards, probably. Um, so it is pretty different, um, from what we're gonna have to do, but they did do it in a quick turnaround. Very quick turnaround.
Yes. I was surprised that they did that fast.
Thoughts on the communication front or other ideas in terms of collaboration with boards?
Well, obviously, if that big meeting happens, I think that's gotta be, yeah, that's gotta be well publicized to the UCUST world.
Are you gonna, well, you probably don't know yet. Sure, I'm gonna say There will be some sort of platform where your meeting minutes are gonna be posted.
There absolutely will be and one of the questions I have is, you know, does it continue from the red WordPress? Does it, there should be something that exists independent of either of the current districts, but then is, just like we had on our website, a link out to WordPress, you know, redstudywordpress.com.
The UCUST just needs his own website.
So, transparency is critical.
I think once we know that, then it's just an active sharing on all parts to push information and push people there.
Um, one of the things, and it's either part and parcel of unification or not even, that I think we did in the very beginning of the study process, after the meeting, we'd sort of come up with like three takeaways. Martha did some of them, I did some of them. And they were sort of a quick notes on what went on and it's one of the things I got thinking, I was like, why don't we do that for our own meetings? Like, I wonder, that's just a quick, when I looked and saw that the last thing that I posted on the, our Facebook page was why we would unify, I was like, oh, I meant to at least post a Happy Thanksgiving. So, I, you know, we got away from sort of that critical need to communicate. And then, you know, it's, it's not quite as active and you, you know, better than anybody and I certainly do, like, I'm so inactive in my normal Facebook page that be, figuring out how we remain active in our Facebook page, so it becomes a resource for people is, I think. I am wondering what you guys think about that idea of just our, you know, three bullet takeaways from every meeting.
Well, I think it's neat. I also think we're coming into the normal time of year budget where there is a lot to communicate.
And there's an interest in knowing more than, yeah.
So, that could become a lot easier to say, okay, and here's what the rollover budget presentation said.
And then we could link right out to This will be, Roger, do you keep all of these at your budget page under the finance part, right? And we could pull that direct link. So, is that something? Cashel, do you wanna do three budget or three bullet takeaways or do you want me to just, like, does anybody, anybody want to? And then you could put it in the right language or you can do it and I, you and I collaborate on it, but
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to take a stab at it and Send it your way. Like, oh, you kinda forgot something major.
If you wanna do it tonight, awesome, and then if, if there's a week that that doesn't work for you or you want to say, Kim, do it.
Will we be able to point to the website yet though?
Um, is this presentation up?
I'll have it on tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
Perfect. So, when you have a chance in Washington, it doesn't even, you know, it certainly doesn't need my approval, but if we wanna just have two sets of eyes on it, then just quick takeaways from each of our meetings and, yeah, it had sort of, not forgotten, obviously, it's budget time, but it's that time of year where, um, keeping people informed if they wanna join us for any of these meetings. And if they can't, at least they've got three.
So, you can do your three but, your three bulleted items and then maybe next meeting, boom, like what the topic is.
That's right, next meeting
Is this, very simple.
First round budget, whatever it's called.
First round.
Those that want more information then can eventually look at, at meeting minutes or
That's right.
Or any of the budget slides or other materials.
And if we were, you know, if we're doing really good at this, we could on Fridays before the meetings coming up, you know, post a link to the agenda, join us Monday.
Do it on a Thursday, don't do it Friday.
Right, okay, thank you. Cause we always have the agenda out by 'Cause we always have the agenda out by Wednesday, so we could do that and point to it. It has, in the past, not really mattered almost what we did in terms of having folks join us for any of these meetings. And understandably, people are busy in their evenings. I think the challenge is to hear about things people are incredibly concerned about at the end that somehow we missed. And it's not in a reactionary mode, but more a, let's make sure in our planning we've considered, you know, all of our strategic needs along with all of the most critical concerns among our parents and taxpayers kind of thing. So if somehow this either generates more interest or gets more engagement, that's awesome. And I don't wanna put it all on you either, Cashel, so just, you know, if you, if there's times that that doesn't work, if we just commit that this is something we wanna do, I'm sure among the five of us, we can make sure that we do it. As one indicator of doing a good job at improving our communications. Anything else, you guys?
Do you really continue doing monitoring reports during budget?
We do, actually, let me, probably should have looked to see what we had coming up. I didn't, I apologize. We get into.
Actually, next meeting is Policy two point three, the, the big financial.
Financial one.
Yes.
Okay.
But we may have one.
Which is kind of appropriate for beginning budget season.
Yeah.
I mean, it works, I think that works well, kind of feeding us.
Timing is good. We were somewhat intentional about that one, weren't we, a long time ago? Just give me one second here, I wanna get into.
Don, some of them get bumped around a little, because Roger looks at the schedule and goes, oh, I'm supposed to present on this and I'm getting data for it the next day. It's like, ah, let's bump that one out.
Okay, no, that's fine.
But actually, that report is, is current year and a, and a recent look back, so I've, I've got the data. It's not, it's not the new.
But, but I know, that, that, not necessarily that one, but I know that happens.
Sometimes when they don't get your stuff on the fifth day. You know, thankfully, that's why we're meeting, I think, on the twenty first.
Yeah, that was the.
Changed things around in the past.
Okay, so on the seventh.
We don't like.
You guys just keep changing these dates to the mouth of my head.
I told you, it's, it's second and fourth about half the time.
We're just messing. Um, so four point seven, governance process, let's see who did that best. Sorry, you guys. Usually look at this ahead and I do not, I forgot. Doodly, my fault. You guys are all holding your mouth open, you were the last one to do four point seven, I know it. I know it.
I know it wasn't me.
Dawn's like, I got this.
And we should not do Dawn, we should give Dawn a little bit more reprieve.
I got my feet wet.
That's right, I don't think she needs a reprieve, she's got this.
But not having Ben here, I don't know.
Word self evaluation. Um, wait till the last one to do it.
Oh, you're off.
Yay! I'm sorry. Really the last one to do that one?
You were.
I don't remember that one at all.
That's the one we do twice a year, correct?
Oh, yeah. We do do it.
We do twice a year.
Which is this one?
Yes.
January.
This was June eighth.
Twenty fifteen.
Yeah. Um. Do we want to, um.
I feel like I did the December.
You might have done the December, I mean, it's.
So, wait, so the board's.
Yes, so it's among the policy and cooperating with the superintendent, the board will establish a set of measurable standards in which the function of the board and the interregional board can be evaluated. One of the ones where we impart substantial compliance, the board will evaluate itself in the areas outlined in the board job description policy. The chair will distribute a report to the board outlining the results of the self-evaluation, which I have not done.
I'll do this for right here.
She's gonna get us again. Interpret the outcomes of the self-evaluation and formulate a work plan that'll highlight specific goals and objectives for improvement of identified areas.
I'll try that one again.
You've done a little better with that one. Do you want to?
I'll try board self-evaluation.
All right.
I was here doing the first one, so I'll try it.
Oh, you were, oh, good.
Sure, yeah, you've seen the.
I was here.
That's true.
That's right.
At that point, you were really going, what?
I have been here since April, so, yeah, I'm good. Yeah, I'm like, what is it? I do understand it better now, though, but I'll do that one.
Well, good, thank you. I guess there's no getting out of me doing it in June, then, huh?
Yeah, and it'll be good to have fresh eyes on it, too. I'm just gonna keep saying that every time you volunteer to do one of these. Thank you, Dawn, fresh eyes. Yours will be the freshest eyes we've got, so there you go.
You're not leaving us, are you?
No, we, we haven't talked.
We only got one extra year.
Sorry, I can do it.
All right, thank you. All right. So any suggestions for the agenda for twelve seven, other than those? Um, we are going to go cover Mark's goals at that meeting.
Budget.
And budget.
And.
And the four point seven and two point three is gonna be a good meeting.
Is that what I am, two point three?
Your four point seven.
Your four point seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the.
Two point three will be Roger. It's the Roger show for the next couple of months.
Yeah.
Is that budget?
It is budget, yeah. It's, it's the annual financial.
Got it, okay, oh, I have that up there.
Financial conditions monitoring. Anything else, folks, that we think we'll need other than? It's gonna be very full. And I think anything else we would want is gonna be covered in the context of what we asked you to look into for.
Yes.
Direction on the next set of budget.
So you'll know there's a possibility that our auditors will have their report completed, that we can send that to you at the end of the week and then officially hit that on the agenda, too. And that does link up Policy two point three, so.
It does, and I think we just put it in consent agenda, otherwise, right?
Correct, yes.
It's, it's a indicator for two point three, but it's from our standpoint, just in consent agenda, got it. If there's more to discuss in it, then it might not be, it might suggest it not be consent agenda, just if there's, you know, discussion we need to have regarding any of the feedback. And there hasn't typically been, so. Okay. And as long as it's okay with you guys, if for some reason we find that this agenda is too full, if Mark wanted to push out his goals to the following meeting, is that, are you comfortable with that as I just look at this?
Either his or mine, doesn't matter.
Pardon?
Either his or mine, whichever.
Yeah, that's true, actually.
Because she may wanna share his goals.
Yeah, as it moves on, and that, you know, we could even do that. So what we have, the following meeting is two point five, tried data, uh, first trimest, first semester tried, first trimester data, wah, sorry, and the first draft of revenue. Um, so each of these meetings are fairly full. He only had ten minutes on there anyway for his goals, or five or ten minutes. So I think it'll be fine, I just, and if for some reason he feels differently, we can do that, Dawn.
Before, he seemed to really wanna do that.
I know. Yeah, no, he did, I would agree. And so it would only be if he felt as though we needed to move something. And if he does, I'll let him know, we could always move, of course.
I was just thinking on future agenda items, if we're gonna do this three bullet point thing, maybe we should figure out what the three bullet points are while all five of us are sitting here.
That's an awesome idea.
And that way, when you go right it, you've already got the ideas.
Yeah.
Right.
Much easier.
Big takeaways.
So what are our three takeaways?
That's what I was gonna say, why don't we do this for her, for Cashel right now?
I was in the process of drafting this to you. But I focused it all on just rollover budget.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yes, that's appropriate.
Fine. Just saying that we reviewed it, the presentation's available here, we'll link to that. And then I have three points literally listed, one, two, three, um, saying what a rollover budget is, like.
That's awesome.
Probably not a lot of people understand that. And I'm, my language may not be exactly correct, but I can read it to you. I said the rollover budget consists, maybe I should, yeah. The rollover budget consists of the FY sixteen actual budget rolled over to reflect known increases or decreases such as insurance cost changes, utilities, pre-K private provider reimbursements, et cetera.
Contractual services.
I mentioned those.
Contractual services, 'cause that's the biggest cost driver.
Yeah, great. Yeah, I mentioned those, 'cause they were sort of like noteworthy on our thing. Then I said the, and then I just stated the facts of the next two points. So the FY seventeen preliminary rollover budget indicates an increase of seventy-nine thousand, et cetera. For comparison, the FY sixteen rollover budget was an increase of seven forty-nine.
You put the percent in there. The three point six and the three point eight.
Yes, I did put the percent in. And then I said, we have several more upcoming board meetings to reflect different budgetary considerations. All of our meetings are open to the public, they take place here, these are the next dates.
That's awesome.
Perfect, perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And I, yeah, no, I think those are all the right things, and it's, I'll take a look at the language, just thinking that we don't, we wanna make sure that the implication isn't that the budget's done or that the rollover is the answer, because the, you know, it's, it's actually just the first look at the operational and contractual known factors.
Right.
And that the budget planning process takes off from there.
Could say something at the end, like, we have several more upcoming board meetings to review different budgetary considerations prior to making a recommendation to taxpayers.
Yeah, or even, yeah, absolutely. And this is just where they start from. So any strategic investments or changes in even, you know, coaches or how, how they're using their resources is the part that Mark will get to us, you know, coming up. But I think that's all the right stuff. I just wanna make sure when we take a look at it, that if a layperson's looking at it, they're not saying, oh, they already did the budget and it's three point whatever percent increase. Oh, maybe we put it, just a bullet that says there are statewide considerations as well this year. Or, you know, there are also statewide considerations around allowable growth and.
A cap to allow.
Yeah, a cap to the allowable growth, or something like that. But because we did spend a little time in talking about that feature that is sort of backing us into some of our numbers. Um. That's, I love that idea of us crafting the three biggies.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dan.
Make it happen.
Yeah, I don't think that added a lot of time. Thank you. Um, I think it can be good. What, what else do we have on there? Nothing, I don't think, right? We need an motion, I think, to go.
Make the motion that we go into executive session at this time.
Second, for the purpose of contract negotiations.
For the purpose of contract negotiations. Well, you took down my thing, I couldn't.
I know, sorry. Mine, too, that's why I had to find it in my many pages that are open here.
If we're doing a contract negotiation, I will second that, because I'm highly curious.
Okay. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes by zero, thank you.